But now I can.
Welcome, everyone, to tonight's council meeting at six o'clock and time to get started. I'd like to first make my usual announcement about speakers. If you're planning to speak at tonight's meeting on any item on the agenda, or even on the item that's on the agenda that says it's for items not on the agenda, please do fill out a speaker card. We have left the front row open for everybody who wants to speak so that you can be acknowledged and we can, you know, allow the time that's necessary. So again, asking you to fill out a speaker card, turn it into City Clerk so that we are aware of the number of people who would like to comment, no matter what the item is on the agenda. And then when we call your name, we'll call three at a time at least so that you can come and sit in the front row. All right, so with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Marks. Please stand.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you'd remain standing, please. We have Pastor Quirk who's going to give us the invocation.
Father, there is never a day that there is one challenge for us to dedicate our mission to the community of governing the city. I ask for wisdom for our mayor and our council and the new challenges faces as well as protecting the traditional values that make the area so special. I ask for wisdom also for our public safety issues, which we must acknowledge and which is quiet. Thank you for their leadership and we are grateful to them. I also pray a blessing upon all the staff in the city of Gilroy so hard we are truly grateful.
Amen, thank you. All right, item three, City Clerk's report on posting the agenda followed by roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on Thursday, August 11th at 11:30 a.m. Councilmember Armideris?
Present.
Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Leo Munoz?
Present.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Atovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blingley?
Here.
All right, item 1.3, 1.2 Orders of the Day, there are none. 1.3 Employee Introductions. Harjo, Finance Director, we have a new financial analyst.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and the members of the community. My name is Harjo Sangam, the Finance Director with the city, and it's my pleasure to introduce Dawn Allen, our new financial analyst. Dawn has over 20 years of experience working in various capacities in accounting and finance. Dawn obtained most of that experience and knowledge in the private sector, working as an accounting and inventory manager before she made the transition to government and municipal finance. For the last eight years, Dawn has worked with the state of Nevada in various capacities, most recently as a budget analyst overseeing the budgets for the Nevada National Guard and the Office of the Military. Dawn also has two bachelor's degrees, one in accounting and another in human resource management. With the city, Dawn will utilize her skills and knowledge to perform complex accounting entries and do budget oversight. She'll also coordinate any special projects within the department, conduct financial analysis, forecasting, or reporting for the city, for the departments as needed. She'll also be helping oversee the city's debt program activities, including required disclosure reporting. Dawn has recently relocated to Gilroy and outside of work, she enjoys reading and playing tennis. With that, I'm also excited to share that with Dawn coming on board, we currently have no vacancies in the finance department. So we're super excited to have a full team. With that, I'll conclude my introduction, so please join me in welcoming Dawn Allen.
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to serving the community.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, item 2.1 is Proclamations, Awards, and Presentations. We have none. Item three is Presentations to the Council, and that starts with the Annual Parks and Rec Commission Presentation, Teri Graham.
I'm still learning.
Are we all?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Teri Graham and I'm the chairperson for the Parks and Rec Recreation Commission. So this evening, I'm here presenting the 2022 Work Plan for the Parks and Recreation Commission. Before I review the plan, I would share our mission. I'd like to share our mission, which reminds the commission why we do what we do. So this is the mission statement. The Parks and Recreation Commission of the City of Gilroy is committed to enhancing the quality of life for its citizens by promoting, planning, acquisition, development, and sustainability of parks, trails, cultural, historical, and other recreational areas. The commission embraces wellness and recreation, park safety, and inclusiveness for all ages and abilities because parks make life better. So here's our work plan, and the first piece of our work plan that we do consistently is the commissioners monitor the city parks monthly. And as part of our responsibilities, each commissioner is assigned two to three parks and they're responsible for monitoring, reporting any repairs, possible safety issues, or trees that might need attention. We also have participated in citywide events such as Downtown Live. This year, we've participated in two Downtown Live events where we have games and share activities available to children and to adults. Thirdly, we'll be hosting Arbor Day this fall. Four, this year, we plan to create an online user survey to seek input on how residents utilize our parks and what amenities they would like to have considered for future. The fifth responsibility that we have is overseeing VTA's Measure B Bicycle and Pedestrian Education and Encouragement Fund, which I'm going to discuss in more detail. So this responsibility is new to our commission. This past May, the commission hosted a Bike to Wherever event on the levee at Christmas Hill Park. Cyclists came to our table and we shared maps and giveaways with participants. In addition to our responsibilities, at our next meeting, we will be interviewing applicants to serve as the Gilroy representative for the VTA Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Arbor Day. The most recent Arbor Day, as some of you know, was back in October 2021 where we hosted it at the Gilroy Municipal Golf Course. Hosting Arbor Day is part of the requirements to be designated, excuse me, to be designated as a Tree City USA. So past locations of Arbor Day have been, all of these listed here, from Farrell Avenue to Rainbow Carriage Hills, San Ysidro, and the next location and date will be sometime in the fall. These are our commissioners and it's a great group and we've got new input from new commissioners and they're enthusiastic, so we're excited about this year. That's it, so thank you for allowing me to share the 2022 Work Plan and for the Parks and Rec Commission, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions?
Perfect.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Love to hear from our commissions. Okay, item 3.2, Presentation from Santa Clara County Office of Supportive Housing. And we have Consuelo Hernan... yeah, she's here, Director of Office of Supportive Housing, to give us a report that I think we're all going to be really happy with and looking forward to.
Sorry, yeah, I didn't bring my glasses. This is right here, right? This one, sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor. City Councilmember Consuelo Hernandez, Director with the Office of Supportive Housing. Thank you, first of all, for having me here this evening. I have a short presentation. I've broken it out into three parts. First is to give you a background and overview of the 2016 Measure A Affordable Housing Bond. Next is to give you an idea of the housing needs and the problems that we face as a community. And third is to offer a potential opportunity for a city and county collaborative, collaboration. Again, the 2016 Measure A Affordable Housing Bond was passed in November of 2016 when voters in our community passed this bond. It's $950 million. And what you're seeing here is the level of investment by program and housing type. So we very quickly presented to the board a strategy of how we were going to implement the housing bond. The majority of folks are familiar with the first two categories, which is basically to increase the production of affordable and supportive housing through multifamily rental. And the total investment is $800 million. We have 150 that's set aside for first-time homebuyers and really looking at the opportunity to produce homes because the market is very difficult in our community. First-time homebuyers are having a hard time accessing those dollars. We set aside very specific housing goals, basically producing 4,800 units over the course of 10 years. And even though we're building more units than the 4,800, we only count these towards our goals. So you'll see here, there's four specific goals and collectively, we're at 82% of our goal and have allocated over the course of five years, $608 million towards a total of 44 developments across eight cities. And that includes 4,053 new apartments and then 720 units that have been renovated. This includes one of our Home Key sites in the city of Milpitas that was a hotel. And we were able to leverage Home Key dollars with our Measure A bond to build and convert a hotel into 134 new units. When we set our goals, we also looked at the contributions of each city and created some goals. We met with each city and we looked at what your population size is, the percentage of people that you represent, that the city of Gilroy represents, what your ELI RENA numbers were for the previous planning period, and we set a very ambitious goal by city based on your RENA allocation. So in Gilroy specifically, we looked at 132 units. That's our goal for Measure A. To date, we have approved 75 units at the Gilroy Gateway Senior Housing Project, and we count all 75 units. So the project is 50% supportive housing, 50% for extremely low-income and very low-income seniors. So we have a remaining goal of 57 units. To date, there's 10 projects in operation countywide totaling 965 units, and we estimate that that houses about 1,776 people. Again, this is our Gilroy project. It was one of the first developments that we funded in November 2017. It was completed in the middle of the pandemic and we didn't really have an opportunity to celebrate that. So congratulations on being one of the first projects to be funded with Measure A funds. To date, since 2015, collectively with our community partners, we have advanced our goals of producing affordable and supportive housing. Since 2015, we have increased our number from about 300 to 2,714. Of that, 2,177 specifically through the housing bond. And what are the challenges we face? We know that the increase of homelessness in our community basically is a result of three things happening at the same time. The loss of affordable housing, wages and public assistance that have stayed flat, and the closing of state and psychiatric institutions without the creation of community-based housing and services. In California, the other problem that we face is that in order to be affordable, in order to be able to live in an affordable unit, that means that you're spending less than 30% of your income towards rent, you need to earn $39 an hour. That's the state number. Locally, in Santa Clara County, you need to earn $55 an hour, which we know that the majority of people that are in the lower-income bracket are earning somewhere in the neighborhood of $15 an hour. We also have an enormous deficit in the production of ELI and VLI housing. So this report is taken from, every year, the California Housing Partnership produces an Affordable Housing Needs Report. This is our report from 2021 for Santa Clara County. So you'll see where the gap is. We basically need to build 51,000 units of ELI and VLI housing in order to address those affordable housing gaps. Again, who can afford to rent? You need to earn 3.2 times the minimum wage in order to afford the average asking rent in Santa Clara County. Basically, what that means is we see a lot of families doubling up, sometimes three families living in a three-bedroom apartment. We also look at what the point-in-time homeless census count is. And so this number highlighted here is for the city of Gilroy. While we have the 2022 point-in-time count for countywide numbers, we don't yet have your city numbers. We expect that to come out later this month and we'll be sharing that through the city manager's office. This is the countywide number. We did see a small increase in 3%, and I want to show you really quickly. These are our housing goals as part of our community plan to end homelessness. And the reason why that number for us, the 3%, is significant is because it could have been a lot worse. Our homelessness prevention system combined with our supportive housing system is making it so that we're reaching people quicker. And if you look at the bottom chart, one of the targets that we have is to reduce the number of new people that become homeless. And we've surpassed that goal and continue to move towards that. In the last six months, we've also housed over 1,800 people. So our pace is a lot quicker in housing folks because of the production of new housing and the infusion, including $3 million locally here in Gilroy of emergency rental assistance. So see here, you see our progress. The bars in blue represent the new number of people that become homeless and the green bar represents the housing placements that we've made. This is Gilroy's RENA numbers in the new planning cycle just to give you a sense of the new production numbers that you're looking at. Finally, the potential for an opportunity for us to work together. I offer you two possible opportunities modeled after what we have in North County. The first is to develop a multi-site housing development. So we, the county, and I will talk briefly about this parcel that we have on Ethan Alexander in Gilroy, is we can either look at a single site and come together and decide what we want to build there, similar to what we have in the city of Los Altos. We're building 90 units of affordable housing at 330 Distal Circle. And the city and the county are working together, co-hosting community meetings. We have a presentation with the Planning Commission on Thursday, and it's all been a collaborative, collective effort. The other option is in the city of Mountain View, they identified five properties that they want to develop in partnership with the county. And very similar, we partner with the cities. So it's two different models, but very similar approach. In both, what you gain is the opportunity to leverage a planning grant from Destination Home, particularly in smaller cities that don't have the capacity to increase your staffing or there's limits on budget. It's a really great opportunity to leverage that from Destination Home. Also, a few other potential opportunities in Gilroy is the Gilroy Armory or any city-owned properties. The opportunity site that I wanted to share with you all tonight is this property on Ethan Alexander. It's 1.3 acres, has a general land use designation of general services commercial and zoning of commercial industrial. The adjacent properties are zoned, commercial manufacturing, R2, two-family residential. So it's a pretty dynamic neighborhood in that you have a variety of zoning uses at hand. This is a view from the street. And there's different development options that the city can direct the county in working together. So there's two options. You can look at a rental housing or an ownership housing opportunity. If we go the rental housing route, we have two different project types. One is half of the units are supportive housing, similar to what you have at Gilroy Senior Apartments, or 25% of the units are for supportive housing with the balance of the units for, quote-unquote, "regular affordable housing." Alternatively, we are introducing a new ownership housing model specifically targeting ag workers. It was one of the groups that we have targeted as part of our own work plan. So those are the two options in terms of development type. And then the conversations we would have with council is who do you want to target for these units? Are you looking at people who are previously unhoused, single adults, families with children, agricultural workers, or older adults? This is an example. We had a celebration last week in the city of Morgan Hill. This is what a rental housing project looks like. That's mixed. It's 73 units. 30 of the units are set aside for ag workers. 18 are for previously unhoused families. And then 24 units are, quote-unquote, "regular affordable." The city of Morgan Hill contributed $400,000 and the county used 9.8 million of Measure A funding. This is just showing you a map of all the developments with supportive housing across the county. It's an interactive map. I'm happy to share the link through the city administrator. If you want to play with the map, it shows you by city where everything is located. Also wanted to share, what does a standard timeline look like? If the city is interested in developing this parcel with the county, it does take about five years, but this is your standard early community engagement. We go through a developer selection process, and then there's the pre-development phase where we basically would be working with your planning department, Planning Commission as required, coming to the city council to present and making our way through the building permit process. Then construction takes anywhere between 18 and 24 months. I also wanted to make sure that you're aware that there's a 55-year covenant that's placed on the property, which means that the units have to stay affordable at the income limits that we agreed to together. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to start with a few because I've been asking for this meeting for quite some time, if you don't mind, and maybe it'll answer some other people's questions too. But just starting with most recently, the one that you just celebrated in Morgan Hill, 9.8 million, you said of county funds. How many units are in that whole development?
73.
73, okay. So Gilroy has the 75 at Monterey. And how much of Measure A money went into that, do you remember?
Oh, I don't remember off the top of my head, I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's okay, because I feel like it's in the hundreds of thousands.
No, the Gilroy, the property was a bit more expensive, the acquisition. That's the differential.
That's okay. So I just, that's why I was wondering is how did that get to be 9.8 and this was for 75 units? Okay, thank you for that. Then I wanted to clarify, you know, when you were referring to people need to make, you know, so much money in order to be able to afford, that's because the definition of affordable is a countywide number that's based on AMI, right? Area median income. Area median income is set without any control in Gilroy. Gilroy is in Santa Clara County and because we maybe are at the lower end or are at the lower end of the income scale, we get put in that position on a countywide definition of affordable, right? So, okay, so there's not much we can do about that, right?
Yes, HUD sets that. It's Metropolitan Statistical Area.
Exactly.
They draw the maps and designate where the AMI levels, where the geography is.
Yeah, no, I understand. Okay, and then the Armory you mentioned. The city doesn't own the Armory, but I didn't think the county did either.
We don't. The state owns it.
Right.
And they issued a request for proposals last year looking for a developer. And we want to be able to signal to the state that while the city may not have the resources, that they have a partnership with the county because we want to make sure that we have some input into what gets built there.
I see, so there's an opportunity there, maybe.
Correct, correct.
Great. And Ethan Alexander could be an opportunity. And if, if we went this route, which I suspect we would all want to do, when, I mean, like the collaborative community engagements, about when would that start? That we could start reaching out to the public to get that going as to, you know, what this will look like or could look like?
Sure, the first step would be to negotiate that memorandum of understanding with the city. If the direction from the council is to go that route, then we would meet with the city administrator and his staff, negotiate that MOU, which would then come back to you for approval. Then it would have to go to my board supervisors for their approval and then we can initiate the community engagement. It really just depends on how long it takes to negotiate that.
I understand. So it's after the MOU has been approved by not just the council, but then the board of supervisors as well?
Correct.
And that could, I mean, I know you can't say, but that's months or years?
No, it's months. We have a template MOU that we can work off of. And it really, if you want to focus on one site, then it's a lot faster than if you wanted to focus on multiple sites.
Right. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to go in the order up there. I see Councilmember Armideris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Consuelo, for being here and thank you and your staff for your hard work on Measure A and implementing it. My question is, in a, in the model that's multi-site, does the... Say we were to go into a multi-site agreement using the county property at Ethan Alexander, would the county move forward with submitting an RFP to the state for the Armory?
Unfortunately, the deadline for that RFP has passed. Assuming that we had an opportunity, the state hasn't actually shared with us if they've selected a developer. If the opportunity presents itself again and there's interest by the council, then absolutely we would work on submitting that.
We could, could the Office of Supportive Housing initiate something or push on the state, move that forward?
Yes, if there's support from the council. So to give you a bit more details, the city of Los Altos, we acquired a property from the Mid Peninsula Open Space Authority and the letter of intent that was submitted for the acquisition came from the city and the county.
And would the city be required to use any surplus city land?
It's at your discretion if you'd like to offer other city sites that are available.
And then one last question, if I could, Mayor. Would it be at the discretion of the city council to determine what levels of income would be required and met at these sites?
Yes, we do have our Measure A requirements, but part of this conversation is how do we come up with some goals together so that it does feel more like a partnership than these are the county rules and we're imposing them on you?
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yeah, and that would probably be something that we would engage the community in as well, in the community stuff, right? Okay, Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight and thank you for all the work, great work you've done in the county. So in Gilroy, 21% of the households are considered extremely low-income, making less than 30% of AMI. 20% of all those households have a cost burden of 30 to 50% and 21% of those households are spending more than 50% of their income on housing. So we have a need here and thank you for being here. My first question has to do with homelessness. So using the Homeless Management Information System, the HMIS, and if you don't have this data, that's fine, maybe you can send it back. From those assessments, how many Gilroy residents need permanent supportive housing? Do we know?
I have the 2020 numbers that were used when we were talking about the Community Plan to End Homelessness endorsement. So back in 2020, there were roughly 430 Gilroy-affiliated households in our queue. And Gilroy affiliation means where do you receive services? And where do you frequent most? So if you quote unquote hang out in Gilroy, then you self-identify as, as being in Gilroy. So four hundred and thirty households. Of those, a hundred and twenty-six needed permanent supportive housing. And if there are specific data questions that you have, I'm happy to follow up after.
I have one more, and if you, if you have it from twenty-twenty, is how many families with children are currently experiencing homelessness in Gilroy? If you know the numbers now or at least in twenty-twenty?
It should be none because we do have our Heading Home campaign where we basically took families, prioritized families for placements in hotels. So there, there, it should be zero unsheltered families, if that makes sense. But again, happy to follow up with city administrator after.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Okay, so that was an excellent presentation. We're gonna, we're, we're on this. We're gonna, we're gonna be on this, council. Yeah, so we're gonna get going. Jimmy, do you have any questions that you want to ask? Consuela's here. Well, we get to the MOU is what the next step is.
No, Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank Consuela for being here. She has cleared the path and showed us what we need to do. So I can tell you that you can expect to have an agenda item very shortly once I get in touch with Consuela in her office. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item three point three, which is a public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda but within our subject matter jurisdiction. Ty, how many cards do you have?
I have two speaker cards at the moment.
All right.
The first one is Paul Lennon, followed by Marty Estrada.
Okay, if you could both please come to the front row and Ty will set the timer. Yeah, well, you're up, so yeah, you don't sit. And then Marty Estrada is supposed to be in the front row. Okay.
Good evening. I'd like to talk to you today on the proposed electronic billboard ordinance changes and sign permit. My name is Paul Lyman. I'm a professional astronomer at Lake Observatory for the University of California. I've been working there for over ten years, but I've been an advocate for astronomy for over forty years. An initial study was published on the fourth of August about the proposed billboard on the auto mall parkway. Electronic billboards have a disproportionate deleterious impact on astronomical endeavors for reasons outlined in a letter that I submitted to council in April of twenty-twenty-one. Not only astronomy, but public health, fauna and flora. Studies indicate that the benefits of nocturnal nature-based interaction to human and environmental health. And there's evidence linking exposure to light at night, light pollution to coronary heart disease, diabetes, cancers, including lung, colorectal, and especially hormone-influenced cancers such as breast and prostate. In San Jose, where billboards have been rolled out in the past or attempted to be rolled out overturning bans from the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties, ninety-three percent of the people surveyed opposed billboards. They find them unsightly and a blight on the landscape. Billboards are a bad idea. I strongly encourage the council to review the initial study that's been reviewed, that's been presented. My opinion is that it is neglectful. It fails to present best practice and it neglects a lot of the industry standard recommendations from people like the International Dark Skies Organization for electronic message centers. John Wanamaker was a pioneer in marketing. He lived between eighteen thirty-eight and nineteen twenty-two. He's quoted as saying, "Half the money spent on advertising is wasted. The problem is we don't know which half." So this tells us that the marketing industry is accustomed to wasteful practices. Outdoor advertisers are demonstrably tolerant of wasted light. I would encourage the council to carefully review the initial study and I would recommend a full environmental, environmental impact report. And the observatory will be available to consult whenever you require us to do so. Thank you very much for your time and service.
Thank you for coming. Okay, next speaker.
Marty Estrada.
Good evening, city council. We just wanted to bring back to your attention, I know it's something that you all are working on, but we're looking to build a, we want to build a community center in Gilroy with a aquatic pool connected for multiuses for the whole community of Gilroy. And we're, we're, we're excited to learn that the city council is going to be conducting a retreat. We would like to be a part of that. It's open to the public to put our agenda on, on top of what you're doing together so we can plan out this community center. It's going to be very important that we do that. So we did, we took the liberty of doing a small survey sample in our community. We passed out a hundred surveys to the community and got a feedback of a hundred percent. The want, folks that were interviewed, they want a, a, they want a community center for youth, but they also want a pool attached to it. So they're really excited about the pool, but they're saying that we need, it's, it's way over time that we need, we have to have a community center for our youth. So that was brought out with the survey that we did. We can send it to you all to, so you guys can look at it, the questions on that. And also on side of that, the gravel issue that these folks are outside protesting on for that, it's, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna cause a huge environmental impact in our area. So please consider that. I know that the environmental impact report, I don't know if it's out yet, but I heard there's a lot of red tags on that. So that's a plus. I'm not getting it built. And lastly, we agree also with the fact that Measure A money needs to be used here in Gilroy that we have to take that money from the county in collaboration, of course, in partnership and build multiple units here in Gilroy and maybe even ask a little bit more. How much more money can we bring to Gilroy? Because there's a huge need here. And the last thing is how many people were homeless in the past? When I worked there ten years ago, there was a lot of children that were homeless with families on the street. And I did that because I was part of the homeless task force with Police Chief Turner. And we, we took a lot of kids off the streets. I got a hundred vouchers from San Jose Housing Authority and we housed a hundred families here in Gilroy. So we really need to look back, not just the data that was presented today, but we'll look back and see how many homeless children are actually in Gilroy and then start working towards a plan for these kids and parents that are homeless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, I know, Mayor, I'm sorry, I know we're not supposed to comment, but can I ask a question?
We don't do interactive with, yeah, right? No, I, I don't want to start that. You can ask after, after this is all done, if you want to say something. Yeah, sorry. He'll ask it later. Ty, do we have any other speakers?
I have one speaker card that just arrived. It's Araceli Vaquera.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everybody. We met two weeks ago. I am a new resident to Gilroy and actually want to start off on a very positive note. I want to thank Chief Espinoza, the Gilroy Police Department. Unfortunately, I've had to call the police department at least five times in the last several weeks. And from Chief Espinoza has responded personally to Captain Smith, to Sergeant Raul, to Officer Placencia. It's, that's been really, really positive. I never knew Gilroy Police Department did that where you actually had your chief and captains contact you directly. But with that, it's because I have been calling that they've gotten to know me. I'm tired. I'm tired of getting woken up at anywhere between eleven PM and one o'clock in the morning because of the music, because of the fights. As a mother, I fear for my children's safety. That parking lot, I spoke with somebody today who told me today, if the design of the, of the, of the park was being designed today, a parking lot would not be designed in that specific area. That parking lot is my backyard. Those issues are happening twenty feet from where my kids rest their heads every night. I'm having to remove my kids from their beds and put them in the living room because I am concerned for their safety. I don't have any fancy words. I don't know what to do. I've contacted the engineering department. I've contacted Parks and Recs. I don't know what else to do. I know that I can be contacting Gilroy PD every time we have an issue because I'm having them at least five nights a week. And I know that other of my neighbors are calling too. So I'm gonna be emailing you, all of you tomorrow. I need your guidance. I need for something to happen. Again, I don't want to use the Gilroy Police Department because they have other more important things to tend to. But I do want a permanent solution for, for, for our concern, for the safety of not just my children, but children of the neighborhood and the community. So you'll be getting that email. Look for it tomorrow. I'll include pictures. And Mayor, if maybe I could make an appointment with you directly after that happens, I would really like to have a sit down with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We, any other public speakers for this item?
I don't have any other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then I'm closing public comment on item three point three. And we're moving on to item four, which is council member reports. Councilmember Braco. Councilmember Armand Eras.
No, no report.
Councilmember Marks.
No report.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. The Visit Gilroy Board of Directors is reopening a search for a new president/CEO. While the board renews its search, current executive director Jane Howard will continue in her position until a replacement has been hired. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, two clean energy resources began providing power to SBC customers in July. The first project is the Casa Diablo GeoThermal Plant in Mono Caudy, California. The resource will provide seven megawatts to SBC and the first and, and is the first new geothermal plant built in California. The second project is renewed, is repowered Mountain View Wind Facility in Riverside County. The SBC Board of Directors approved a policy statement and reallocated funding to support equitable EV charging access at new affordable housing developments. Six million funding was added to the previous budget of one point five and will be available to those SBC jurisdictions that adopt the EV Charging Model Code and construct affordable housing projects during the upcoming code cycle. I'd like to welcome all the youth back to school. We're encouraging our community to leave the car at home and choose walk, bike and roll to school. This helps teach our children safe walking and biking skills and reduces traffic and air pollution near and around schools and helps children get more physical activity. And lastly, to my council colleagues, staff and the public, I will be introducing a City Code Chapter sixteen offenses, miscellaneous amendments to safe storage of firearms with the goal of reducing gun violence and improving gun safety for everyone under future council-initiated agenda items at our September twelfth meeting. Thank you.
All right, council member Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one report. The Ad-Hoc Committee for Downtown met on Tuesday, August ninth to continue discussing strategies for the revitalization of downtown. There are many exciting things happening downtown and the committee is using this excitement as a catalyst for change and finding new ways to generate more business activity in the area. I want to thank council member Armand Eras and Marks for all the hard work that you guys have been putting into this and for being proactive and obviously our city staff. Some of the projects that we're working on include updating the downtown strategic plan, implementing some new vacant incentives that will help jumpstart the renovation of commercial spaces so that they can be leased out faster. And also the development of pop-up parks at various locations so that we can attract, or we can activate unused parcels and create more gathering spaces for our community. This idea came a few months ago when we visited Morgan Hill and sort of talking with them and, you know, bringing this to the, to our committee and they've been very supportive of this and we look forward to that. Also, the committee is also working with the city on a parking management program and an assessment district to help fund future projects. So again, we've got a lot of stuff that we're talking about. We're, we're moving forward to council and I look forward to continue working on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to verbalize that question that you had earlier or just let it go for now?
I'll let it go for now.
Okay. Councilmember La Romano.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and I just have a couple of things. One is at our SCRA board meetings, we decided to meet quarterly for now since that, we're hoping that's going to be sufficient. We'll see, but for now, that's the South County Wastewater Treatment Plant. We're going to be meeting quarterly. And on VTA, the board and PAC, I want to announce that the twenty sixteen Measure B Citizens Oversight Committee issued their annual report, which they concluded that Measure B money is being spent as intended by the voters and that it's in compliance. I just want to point out that that report is for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. They just now issued it, but that, that's for July one, twenty twenty, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. So we're more than a year into the next cycle. We don't have a report on that one yet. All right, that is my report. And, okay, next, we're moving on to item five. Council correspondence, we have none. Future council-initiated agenda items. Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask that we agendize that we begin to proclaim March thirty-first as the, as an annual Cesar Chavez Day for the city of Gilroy. I would like to move forward on making Cesar Chavez Day an official city of Gilroy holiday and as part of a continued effort to address barriers to racism and better to include, celebrate and uplift communities of color. Currently, Cesar Chavez Day was first proclaimed as a California State Holiday back in two thousand and now as a national holiday in two thousand fourteen. So I ask that we agendize this in the future and hopefully bring this back as a city holiday.
Okay. Councilmember Armand Eras, do you have something different?
Something different, yes.
Okay, so we need to address these one at a time then, hang on. Okay, council, so my understanding is we're being asked, first of all, I want to say, because I had to look into this, this is the way to be going about this. It is a council decision to add a holiday. Gilroy already has ten holidays and two floating holidays. So any more discussion of that, I can't do. I'm just setting the stage to see if council wants to put this on a future agenda to talk about how, how we add, do we want to add a new holiday? Do we want to make it a, take one that's already a holiday and make this, you know, something else? Or how you want to go about it? Because keep in mind, public safety never gets time off. So if you make a holiday, it's only for some employees, not for all. And then you got to compensate for that. And it means city hall is closed. So with that, I'm just going to ask for a thumbs up and look down and see if we have a majority supporting it. And we do. Okay?
Thank you.
That's going to be a future agenda item. Councilmember Armand Eras.
Thank you. And thank you for that agenda item, Councilmember Tovar. I'm not sure if we agendize this or ask staff to move forward with it, but I would like an inventory of the available park acreage facilities and activities in our city, in particular those that are youth-focused and accessible to low-income families. That would include like community centers, youth centers, senior center. If we could get a full inventory of what we have.
Yeah, do you want to respond to that, Jimmy? Because I don't know why that would need to be an agenda item, why you couldn't just get that.
Request it as a report back?
No, I mean that you could just be provided. Go ahead.
Well, we, we, we can create something like that, but this might be a good example to put in our council correspondence as well, since it's on the record. But we have other information and, you know, we could, we could put that together. I do want to, I do want to clarify, you want a list of all city lands that are available for youth or could you?
So city parkland, right, that's available for recreation, city facilities that are available for recreation or community gathering. And then the programs and activities that are accessible or focused on youth, in particular, low-income, youth that come from low-income families.
And that would be put on by the city itself?
Correct.
That I could do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item seven, which is the consent calendar. So unless somebody requests to pull something from consent, I'm going to go to public comment. And do we have any public comments on any item on consent?
No, Madam Mayor, I did not receive any speaker cards on that matter.
Okay, then I'm going to close public comment and ask for a roll call vote.
Let's see, we have a motion from Councilmember Lito Munoz and a second by Councilmember Tovar, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Armand Eras?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Hi.
Councilmember Lito Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blenckley.
Yes, all right, that passed unanimously. Item eight, bids and proposals. Award of contract to CSG consultants for the design of the Gourmet Alley and Railroad Alley pedestrian and bicycle beautification improvement projects in the amount of three hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred and forty dollars with a project contingency of thirty-four thousand, ten percent and approve a project expenditure of three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. And Darrell is going to give us the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. Good to be here this evening. Glad to come back and discuss our latest, one of our latest grant awards with our Gourmet Alley and Railroad Alley projects. Our city manager, Mr. Forbes, has briefed you previously on the grant and what that includes. And tonight, we're here to talk about the actual contract award for the design. Tonight, the award of contract to CSG consultants for the Gourmet Alley and Railroad Alley pedestrian and bicycle beautification improvement project and approval of a fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget amendment. And this is our project reference number that we use in our engineering department. The background for this project is in March of two thousand twenty-two, the city was awarded a three point nine million dollar grant from the California Department of Transportation, known as Caltrans. The grant is for cleanup events and infrastructure improvements along Gourmet Alley and our Railroad Alley. Improvements include paving the alleys with marked paths for walkers and bikers, adding shade and benches, adding wayfinding signage and waste recycling receptacles. On July eighth of two thousand twenty-two, staff issued a request for proposals On July 8th of 2022, staff issued a request for proposals for an on-call engineering and design support services to 11 of our prospective consultants on our approved list from council. One proposal was received from CSG Consultants in the amount of $343,000. The grant has has awarded up to $500,000 for design consulting, which is well above the proposed contract amount that we have here tonight. The funding for this project, total proposal from CSG Consultants is $343,240 with an optional services included. A 10% contingency will be added to that. Funding source based from our Fund 487, which is our downtown beautification fund. That's where they'll land. Staff will invoice Caltrans for reimbursement of the design costs throughout the project. Construction costs will be determined through a competitive construction bid process subsequent to our final design if approved tonight. The recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending the budget for the City of Gilroy for fiscal year 2022, 23 and appropriating a proposed expenditure amendments. Award a contract to CSG Consultants in the amount of $343,240 with a project contingency of 34,324 for the design of the Gourmet Alley and Railroad Alley Pedestrian and Bicycle Beautification Improvements Project, number 22 RFP Public Works 478, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. And I'm here to answer any questions on this bid for you tonight.
Thank you. All right, council members, any questions from the staff? No? Okay, public comment. Do we have any?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
No speaker cards, okay. Closing public comment? Wow, really? Yes, Fred, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I just I have a comment. Thank you for that report and I appreciate your being clear on sort of what the project, where the funding eventually would go for, because I think there's a lot of misbelief out there of what what we can and cannot do with that grant. So I appreciate you being, you know, upfront about that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so then I'm looking for a motion, possible action, to adopt a resolution?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember Armendaras to adopt the resolution and award the contract.
Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Hi.
Councilmember Lito Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, I kind of read it like they're both together.
For the record, the the action just taken was both Agenda Item A, adopt the resolution, and Agenda Item B, award the contract.
Yes, that is how I said it. Is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So make sure that's everybody's intent. So we're done.
Just want to make sure.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item nine, 9.1, public hearings. All right, this is for the adoption of an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy adopting a short-term interim franchise agreement with Recology for solid waste hauling services and a finding that its action in adopting the ordinance is exempt from review under SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines. And in that proposed ordinance will continue an existing state mandated program for the protection of public health and the environment, and none of the circumstances in SEQA guidelines apply in that section. So I think first, before I go to Bryce, though, I need to ask for ex parte communications. And even if you did not get any information, you need to disclose that you had any communications. Then, if you got some information out of it, disclose that. Okay, so were there any ex parte communications? None. Okay. Bryce, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As mentioned, the staff part of this is an interim solid waste agreement with Recology and urgency ordinance to place the interim agreement into effect. To put some context into what we're discussing tonight, the city charter actually has provisions that relate to franchise agreements such as this. And they have a their con, they provide a context for the actions that are presented tonight. So per the city charter, franchise agreements would be adopted by ordinance. They are to have a maximum term of 25 years. And then any service providers operating outside of a valid franchise agreement is deemed a misdemeanor by the charter. So the current solid waste franchise agreement we have with Recology was adopted September 2, 1997. As of September 2 of this year, that would be the 25-year term being reached. So that's 18 days out. We did receive as the one two-month extension during the negotiation period, which pushed the term of the agreement to August 31, 2022. What's triggered this item is that we received a second request for another two-month extension. The challenge is that approving that extension would breach the 25-year term. So in discussions with our Vermaal Services and Recology and our city attorney's office, we've come to to form an interim agreement, which would which would address the issue and essentially continue services. And negotiations do continue with Recology and are wrapping up on a long-term franchise agreement, but it wouldn't complete in time to become effective before the end of this current term. So the interim franchise agreement is proposed to continue providing the mandated essential public health services at the current service levels that we're receiving today. It also begins the first implementation steps for the new state legislation, specifically identifying commercial generators for our recycling and organics waste streams. A big point that we wanted to make sure and as part of negotiations as well was that we do not increase rates during the term of this interim agreement. It maintains what we have existing as we have it today. The term would end December 31 of this year or until replaced by the long-term franchise agreement when it becomes effective, whichever happens first. Due to timing, we're asking for the urgency ordinance. If we follow the standard ordinance timeframe, we have two council meetings and a 30-day delay before effectiveness. So an urgency ordinance is needed to put it into place immediately. Otherwise, we'll be looking at a 40-day gap without service. In order to do this, there are findings that are needed to be adopted by council. So they're in more detail in the ordinance attachment summary. This is a required service for the protection of public health and is a state legal obligation the city has. The charter requires an agreement, but the next council meeting is after the 25-year term is reached. The provision of services without franchise is a misdemeanor, preventing our current waste haul from providing the service, which affects health, safety, and the general public welfare. And then finally, a franchise agreement in place ending in the new one in negotiation necessitates this interim agreement to be effective during that gap period. As mentioned in the reading of the title, the emergency ordinance is exempt from review under Section 15061B3, the common sense exemption, and that is continuing an existing program for protecting public health and the environment and that none of the circumstances of Section 15302 apply to this. Alternatives available to council, obviously, council may adopt, reject, or modify the ordinance or the agreement. However, it's not recommended to reject or modify as that will likely produce the gap in service in order to make the modifications or arrangements. Fiscal impact, there's none to the city at this time. Again, it's continuing existing terms that we have currently. So the franchise fee revenue to the city remains the same, and more importantly, the customer rates stay the same as well. As the staff is recommending that council read the motion or take a motion to read the urgency ordinance by title only in way of future reading, and then after having the public hearing, adopt an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy approving a short-term interim franchise agreement with Recology South Valley for solid waste hauling services. That completes the presentation. Happy to address any questions.
All right, thank you. Okay, council members, any questions of Bryce? Okay, then I will go to, I'll open the public hearing. It's 6:55. Do we have any speakers?
No speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public hearing at 6:55. All right, possible action. First one is, okay, it's going, motion to read the ordinance by title only in way of further reading.
Oh, I will still need to do a roll call.
Okay. Can you see who the motion is?
Yes, Councilmember Lito Munoz was the motion and followed by a second by Councilmember Bracco.
Right.
Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Hi.
Councilmember Lito Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, so that's unanimous. And now you will read the ordinance, right?
Yes.
Read the one and sell out. Okay.
An urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy adopting a short-term interim franchise agreement with Recology South Valley for solid waste hauling services and a finding that it its action in adopting the ordinance is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B-3, common sense exemption in that the proposed ordinance will continue an existing state mandated program for the protection of public health and the environment, and none of the circumstances in SEQA Guidelines, Section 15300.2, apply.
Okay. Finished?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so now we need the second motion to adopt an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy approving a short-term interim franchise agreement with Recology South Valley for solid waste hauling services. Okay?
I'll second.
Made by Councilmember Bracco, seconded by Councilmember Armendaras.
Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Hi.
Councilmember Lito Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, that's unanimous as well. Okay, 9.2, establishment of application fees for flying a commemorative flag at City Hall. And so before we get to the report, again, I have to ask for disclosure of any ex parte communications, any discussion at all with anybody? No? No? Okay, I did. I notified two people of that this item was going to be on the agenda. So that qualifies as ex parte. I did not learn anything from it. I just notified them. Okay, all right. So Bryce, go ahead and give the report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. And this item to establish the fees for a flag for the flag-flying policy. Staff relied on two existing council-approved policies. The first, the flying flags is SEQA's policy. And so there's two provisions in there. It states that there will be an application fee amount determined by council and then requires 150 verified voter signatures on their first application. If repeatedly applied for each year, then it's only every other year that those signatures would be required and to be verified. The second is the cost recovery ordinance, which establishes that 100% of cost recoveries for this type of fee are to be collected. But ultimately, the fee amount is ultimately set by council. So the largest component to the proposed fees is based on the signature verification, which is the highest cost item. And looking at 150 signatures, we're looking at a cost if we use a Santa Clara county to verify the signatures of just under $2,000. The Gilroy City Clerk is about $527. So that's about a $1,500 difference between the two. So staff is proposing that the the fee be used and established with the city clerk verifying the signatures using four 1.5 minutes per signature verification, 150 signatures, looking at three and three quarters of an hour for the city clerk to review those signatures, and about 15 minutes of the city administrator's office analyst in order to review the rest of the application, make sure it makes compliance and press staff report. So combined, we're looking at a fee on a review that requires signatures to be verified of $552. The fee amount calculation, there's no signature required, is just the processing fee, which is $25. Alternatives, council can approve, modify, reject the proposed fee. The fiscal impact of the proposed fee is cost neutral and that the amounts would cover the full full associated costs for processing. And then costs associated with any proposed events and any staff time on that would be recovered through those respective permit applications for those events. So staff's recommendation is council adoption of the resolution to establish an application fee for flying commemorative flags at City Hall. That completes the presentation. Again, happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Okay, council members, questions of staff before public comment? I see none. Okay, then I'm opening the public comment. It is, oh, God, sorry, my phone, what? Seven o'clock. It's seven o'clock exactly. Any speakers?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing at seven o'clock? There's no, okay, no comments? Wow. Wait, Councilmember Tovar?
Comments from us?
Yes. Councilmember Tovar, you have?
Yeah, thank you. So maybe this is a question for our city administrator or Bryce. I know when this first came up, obviously, I championed, obviously, the pride flag, and it was a council-initiated or supported event. So with this here, if it's a council member that comes up with this, the council member is responsible for this fee, correct? Right? The application fee, if?
I guess, the applicant. You guys speak to it, but whoever is the applicant.
So, yeah, Mr. Tovar, whoever signs the application would be responsible for the
Perfect. Yeah, no, I have no problem. I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Really? Nobody has, okay.
I pushed the speaker.
Oh, yeah. How come it's not up there? Yeah, okay, well, go ahead.
So I do take issue with this amount of money, in particular, the fee for verifying signatures. I understand that it will take time for our city clerk to verify them and go through the process with the ROV or access the voter files, but but I think that regardless of the issue or the cause that you want to put out there, it's it's a public service at a public place, right, at City Hall? And I think that this cost could be prohibited, prohibitive, excuse me. And so I think it is it is substantial. And if the voter, if the residents collect the signatures and get the support, I would like to see that as as something to demonstrate community support in lieu of a fee. I think that'd be much more friendly to our community and to the people who really want to see, you know, a flag representing their cause posted at City Hall. Thank you.
Councilmember LaRomenos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So with regard to the the fee amount, I mean, I fully respect the fact that, you know, sometimes the people's price points might be a little bit different as they look at different services and whatever. But I also recognize too that this is, you know, close to four hours worth of staff time. And again, this is not an exorbitant, you know, effort to shake anyone down for wanting to fly a flag, but really just a cost recovery kind of thing. And if we're looking at this this fee, if it's amortized over the two years, when you got to do this every every two years, we're really talking about $276 a year. And given that, you know, we've got to get 100-plus signatures, I mean, if everyone gives a couple of bucks, it's it's right there. So, you know, my my hope is that, you know, people get out there, they support the cause. Sometimes it's it's easy just to sign a piece of paper and say, sure. But wanting to see a little bit of skin in the game, but also wanting to make sure that staff's time is compensated for that as well. We got a lot of things going on. We just want to make sure that we're compensated appropriately.
Right. Okay. Okay, seeing no more comments, then it's ready for for a vote? No one, no public comment? Well, I already closed the public hearing. I'm just surprised that there's nobody that wants to speak to this in the public. Okay. Okay, so are we doing this on the screen?
This has to be a resolution, so we have to do a roll call vote. However, we can do the motion is by Councilmember Lito Munoz, seconded by Councilmember Marks.
Right.
All right, and I'll do the roll call here.
Okay.
Councilmember Armendaras?
No.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
No.
Councilmember Lito Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, so that passed five to two. All right, item 10, unfinished business, we have none. Item 11, introduction of new business, 11.1. Approve a marketing and economic development agreement with the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce. And Jimmy's giving the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. The item before you is an agreement with the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce. Recently, we have, as the city, been evaluating our agreements and in many instances have found that we do not have agreements with certain organizations. And so we've we've tried to clean that up and most recently, we we did visit Gilroy's $350,000 annual agreement. So we're moving on to the chamber now. The chamber has a long history of collaboration with the city. We have a rely, we rely on each other to fill in the holes where we're not able to do so ourselves, but in essence, there's been no formal agreement ever in place. This actual agreement is within the city administrator's purchasing authority, so legally do not have to bring that to council. But one of the issues that has been identified, and I think it's important for transparency, is that the chamber does conduct political activities. And one is they endorse candidates, they take positions on ballot measures, they have that part of their operations. And so I felt it was important that council know exactly what these dollars are going to and that as staff, we would not permit those funds to be allowed to be used for those activities. And that's clearly written in any kind of agreement. It also gives the chamber knowledge that they're going to have that money budgeted annually as part of their budget and it enables us to look at some more long-term projects that we want to work on together. If you recall, the the city used to contribute about $200,000 to the Economic Development Corporation. The city stopped doing that in 2020 to do those activities in-house. But there are some places where it just makes sense for us to use them and they use us, you know, in order to promote economic development. I'm going to talk about some of those things we've done. You also recall that at the time, the $200,000 was moved from the EDC internally. The city had anticipated hiring a deputy city administrator. That position was not filled and then COVID hit, and so we hired at a economic development analyst level. And I think in seeing some of the grants that we received and some of the connections that we've made out in the business community, that position has done quite well for us. Very happy with how that's been going. But we still benefit from relationships with outside entities. One of the biggest projects that we had with the chamber was the Small Business Grant Program that we received funding for, but only having one staff member in-house did not enable us to really administer that. So we were able to work with the chamber who had staff available to do some of that work. The only thing we gave them was the administrative fees that we got from the grant. So those fees were either going to go to the city or they were going to So those fees were either going to go to the city, or they were going to go to whoever did the grant program. And the chamber having very direct contact with businesses was able to outreach a lot better than I think we could have done so when they really helped us out in that situation. Another area that we've worked with the chamber is promotional advertisements for Gilroy in the Silicon Valley Business Journal. We collaborate with them, they do the majority of the work in that aspect. And in fact, we don't pay them to do so. But the city does help finance those actual publications. And it gets our name out there a little, a little more. So we've, we've had some good successes with those kinds of programs. And that's what we're looking to continue to do with the, the funding. This agreement would be reimbursed base. So there, there was, this would only be paid if services were provided and staff felt that those were received. A good example is, is that with the, the Silicon Valley Business Journal, we publish an article, we get a bill. Bullet Down is a collaborative workforce development program. And Kathleen Rose Gavillon, one time was talking to Mark Turner, the, the, the chamber CEO and myself, about collaborating into trying to get Gilroy kids to get into trade schools, to get into Gavillon for, you know, skills and develop and keep this job market local. And that was something she had mentioned to us, and Mark and I had talked. And are in the trades and are able to, you know, stay local, stay home and do these jobs for our community. So I'm really excited about that program, and I know Mark is too. And so that'll be probably a large amount of what we focus on in the next year or so. Apprentice, 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 excuse me, apprenticeship programs. I'm so excited. And, and other things, as you see these big projects being built around Gilroy is a good opportunity for us to get some of these kids involved and see how this works and how they can get into the workforce. And so we have some great opportunities. The last part of this agreement would be a quarterly report to the council. And that could be inclusion, including of business contacts, corporations they've talked to, activities they've done, promotions, collaborations. So we would ask that they report to council every quarter, like Visit Gilroy does. And, and describe some of the activities that they've done and then get questions and your feedback as well. The alternative is council may approve, modify, or reject a proposed agreement. And there's no budget actually required. This amount is currently being absorbed in the city's budget and I expect it to continue into the future as well. So that concludes my staff report. Mark Turner, CEO of the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce is here, if you have any questions for him as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, council, any questions of Jimmy? Does anybody wish Mark to take the podium, or do we see him enough? Do you have a question?
Uh, come on, come on up. I want to make a statement, yeah, I want to make a statement and, and it's a question. But I want to give the opportunity to the members to also say something before we, we continue. But if you wanted to start, go ahead.
Well, thank you, and I thank you, Jimmy, for that presentation, council. Thanks for the opportunity. I, I do, I'm also very excited, as is our staff and our board members who are here tonight. Very excited about the workforce development initiative in particular. We know that from several years ago, that, that the workforce development has changed. Just prior to the pandemic, you know, you could train workforce, get them prepared and off they go. But now, we have to find that workforce. And then we have to bring them together with industry and find a way of connecting them, making sure that they're properly trained. Who are here that also, again, very supportive and always very encouraging about what we do. So thank you for those comments.
And one last thing, and thank you to your board, obviously, so. But one of the things, Mark, that I have to tell you that impresses me, because again, you and I meet or talk quite a bit, is your transparency. You know, we talked about that a lot here. And I never had, ever had a doubt when I talked to you about sort of where the chamber is going and sort of the partnerships. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, council member Hilton?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mark, I want to talk a little bit about the transparency part.
Sure.
So the Gilroy, Gilroy Chamber of Commerce is an organization that, you know, is the benefit of businesses, right? That's, that's your core mission.
Sure.
And you take positions on legislation that is for the benefit of the members, including endorsements and campaign contributions of legislators, right? To the Gil PAC.
Right.
But with that said, the Gilroy Chamber plays a unique and vital role connecting the business community. And the city is heavily reliant on sales tax. I'm highly aware of that. And this was from the staff report too, that, you know, I appreciate that, you know, and we couldn't provide, obviously, public services without them. First COVID relief funds, like, like city administrator talked about, the Gilroy Chamber stepped in to fill that gap. That's a perfect example about, of how the chamber services and staff, you know, sees the need. But like the League of Cities in California, the Chamber of Commerce is a political advocacy firm and has a political action committee or PAC, who has stances on housing, transportation, land use, minimum wage, and more that always aren't the benefits of the residents that we serve. And we're talking about funding you with taxpayer dollars. It is my opinion that cities should not be funding political advocacy firms that have a PAC. That's different than the Visit Gilroy Board. You know, your meetings aren't public, they're not recorded, votes by board members are not public. I'm growing more uncomfortable using taxpayers' funds for these types of organizations and their associated PACs. My other concern that I have is that there's members on this council that are currently endorsed and have received campaign funds from the Gil PAC. So that may or may not be a conflict of interest, but I wanted to get this out front first to give you a chance to respond and, and your members as well. Because I am not diminishing the value that you do add.
Right.
But that's where I draw the line on the, the PAC part.
Sure, and I understand. And we've had conversations before around that idea of the, the PAC. The board has had discussions around this as well. The board is prepared to make a decision to dissolve the PAC in order not to interfere or create any conflict of interest around this sort of an agreement. And so our board is meeting tomorrow night. We could, we could finalize that if that brought some level of comfort to you and to others on the council. But that isn't anything that we feel would, would, we would want to allow to be in the way of this, of this agreement. So, yeah, and, and as far as the other items, we, we obviously, we do advocate for business. We are a business organization and certainly a lot of what we do is done for the benefit of our, of the business community at large. We certainly, the, one of our goals, of course, is to create a, a quality of life for our residents as well through those, through those relationships. And we think that we have done better to build a stronger community because of that.
Okay, we'll have to see where the majority feels on.
Sure.
You don't need to, yeah, don't need to respond specifically to one. Okay, council member Armadarez?
Sure. Thank you, Mark, for being here tonight. And like I said earlier in our conversation, I, the idea of a collaborative effort, right, between us on the development of our workforce, in particular, these young people, is something that is, is long overdue. And, and I'm excited to invest in it. But one question regarding that. Would it include college-age students or young people who aren't in college? Would it include those folks who are, you know, on the, on the fringes or are in need of, of development, right? But not enrolled in college or in high school any longer?
It absolutely would, right. This program is going to be inclusive, expansive. We want to begin and probably as we launch this, we'll be working more in the age range of those who are junior in high school all the way up to college age. But it, it's not a requirement that they first are in school. We want to make sure that whether they're in school or not, that we're finding a pathway into the workforce. And so for some, that may be college, once they identify exactly what they're looking to do. But for others, it may be in the trades, building, building trades or other opportunities for them. We want to make sure that what we're doing is connecting them to that opportunity and have some, some way of, of entering the workforce and creating a living for themselves.
Thank you. And secondly, I, I echo my, my colleague's sentiments in terms of the Gil PAC, right? And I often find myself in reading the newsletter at odds with your, your stance on legislation, in particular around workers' rights and, and legislation around benefits and the needs of our working families. So I personally would, would feel much more comfortable with an organization that, you know, being not a governmental organization, but did, you know, hold itself accountable in that way. I would, I would definitely feel more comfortable in that.
Sure, and I want to make sure, as I had mentioned, that there's a possibility that the board could agree to do something different with the PAC. We would not, we, we probably would not eliminate our business advocacy efforts, which you're describing, which you're describing there. So I wouldn't want to make any promises like that, uh, tonight.
Okay. Understandable.
Sure, thank you.
Council member La Romanios.
Mark, very, very good to see you tonight. You know, we've worked on a lot of different projects over the years. And I think my colleague correctly identified how important sales tax is related to the community. And that's the kind of thing that pays for the police, the parks, the road improvements, the firefighters and all those things that we need and want as a city and deserve as, as a community. With regard to the PAC activities, the Gil PAC, can you share how decisions are made and how it's structured? Because I don't have a good sense if it's separate, if there is a division within the organization. How are decisions made? Can you walk us through that?
Sure, the division is, there is a, a division, however, and, and the PAC is designed as, to have some, some arms-length distance from the chamber board. But all decisions made by the PAC do eventually come through the chamber board. We don't, we don't allow any particular committee to be out on its own without chamber oversight and chamber board approval. So there is a committee that is selected that actually does the interviews and goes through that process. They then will make a recommendation to the chamber board for who those, those members might be that they'd recommend for, for endorsement. And then the board reviews and gives some, typically will, will approve those endorsements. Sure.
Council member Barco.
Mark, are you going to be working with the school district on this?
We are, we've actually already had one meeting. We had, Gavillon was involved, the school district was involved as well. That was just our first initial meeting. We had, and, and our goal is to reach out to, to have someone, a representative from the city. We'd like to see if Corinne would be able to join us. We haven't made that phone call yet, so I don't know if she's watching. But also with the, the school district, the county, and we're even interested in talking to the state regarding what we're doing here as well. So there's multiple organizations that we're going to bring into this conversation and into this effort as well.
Because, the reason I ask, as an employer, we get applications mainly 23, 25-year-olds. And it's unbelievable how many of them are almost illiterate. And they graduated from our local schools and they can't fill out an application. So that's something that really needs to be worked on.
You know, I appreciate that, council member. You know, we do every year, except for the COVID years, we do a, called Rock the Mock, that we do at the high school campuses where we work, work with students and getting them through a mock interview, but also talking about what it takes to get prepared for that interview, talking about applications. The school district in particular has been very supportive of what we've been doing there, and we, we think we can continue to build on that.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got one comment before we go to public comment or, or question. And that is that what, what staff has proposed, and what I believe can be accommodated by the chamber, is absolutely no overlap or correspondence. I mean, this $50,000 that we're suggesting go to the chamber is completely unrelated to anything PAC. And those are the terms. If we, if we decide to go forward, the terms are that not one single penny of that $50,000 is to be used towards anything of endorsing political candidates. So, and there's no, is there a reason why we should fear that that won't be adhered to?
No, and I don't, I don't sense that what's being expressed is any fear about where that money's being spent as much as there is concern about, you know.
Yeah, I just want to know that there is no reason for us to fear that the money that, that comes from the city will have anything whatsoever to do with the PAC.
It will not.
It will not.
Right.
That's the answer, thank you. Okay. All right, opening public comment then.
I have one speaker card and it's Ron Kirkish.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council and community. When listening to the communication here, you know, we have two adversaries here. We have business and we have labor. And it's, it's a, it's an adversarial relationship that's gone on since time began. For two people on our days to say, no, we want you to come to our side, that ain't going to happen. The adversarial system is important. It keeps things in check both ways. To ask Mark to say, I want you guys to come to me, be on my side. I want you guys to give everybody $100 an hour. Mark's saying, I've got a business, people that I'm responsible to. I can't work with that. So for you, Rebecca, and for you, Hilton, I'm sorry, but you're out of line. Thank you.
Okay, no other public comments?
No other speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so closing public comment, we've had council discussion. I'd like to make a motion that we, right, approve the agreement as, as suggested by staff with the very specific verbiage that needs to be there that says, none of it goes towards anything, any political endorsements.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second, is this a digital?
Yes, this is a digital voting.
Okay, so I made the motion and it was seconded by council member Tovar. Yeah, it came out mover as Peter, seconded as Fred. I don't care, if you want to leave it that way, that's fine. But it's not letting us vote.
Can you, I think I got you here as I, on my end here.
Yeah, that's the mayor.
Mine doesn't let me vote.
All right, just to confirm, did you vote yes?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's, oh, it passed six to one, not five to two. Okay, six to one. Okay?
Thank you, council.
Yep, thank you. All right, 11.2. Rename the Gilroy Museum's research room after the late author and museum volunteer, I should have worked on pronunciation, Claudia Soluski. All right, and Adam Hennig is going to give us the staff report, okay?
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Adam Hennig, Recreation Manager. And I will be presenting about the renaming of the Gilroy Museum's research room after the late author and dedicated volunteer Claudia Soluski. Claudia was an English teacher at Gilroy High School and taught English at San Jose State University. In addition, she volunteered extensively at the museum and authored two books about the history of Gilroy. Pieces of the Past, A Story of Gilroy, which was published in 1982, and Gilroy, which was part of the Images of America series published in 2003. When Claudia was conducting research for these publications, she did most of it in the museum research room. She passed away in 2016. Since her passing, since her passing, the family has donated the book royalties to the museum. the museum. To have a public facility be renamed after someone, it must meet the following criteria set forth in the Parks or Recreation Facilities Naming Community and Memorial Contribution and Gift and Sponsorship Policy. Number one, the person must be deceased at least one year before the dedication naming proposal be considered. Claudia had passed away in 2016. Number two, demonstrates outstanding achievements, contributions to the community and the enrichment of the city. Claudia published two books about the history of Gilroy, including this one on the screen. She was a longtime dedicated volunteer for the museum, and she provided research and gave talks about the history of Gilroy. Number three, have had a direct and long-term association with the facility. When writing her books, Claudia used the research room. She also spent time there conducting research for other projects about the history of Number four, contribution to the community was through our park or recreation system or programs. The museum is the city facility. The named resource is pertinent to or representative of the individual contribution. As I mentioned, most of her research was conducted in the research room. Number six, the proposal to commemorate an individual should contain evidence of broad-based local support such as letters, editorials and petitions. There were those included in the staff report, and as you can see on the screen in the top right-hand corner, that was an editorial written in the Gilroy Life Newspaper, and below that is a letter of support from Gilroy Historical Society President Connie Rogers. And lastly, the cost will be borne by the individual, group or organization sponsoring the request. The PAC, the plaque will be paid for by the Gilroy Historical Society. In addition, the policy required approval from the Parks and Recreation Commission, which they approved unanimously at their May meeting. Then it goes to the City Council. The action item before you is to motion on the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation to rename the Gilroy Museum Research Room after Claudia Soluski. This concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Council, any questions of Adam?
I do have a comment.
Okay, and then I'll go to Fred. Okay.
Um, I would just like to say that I, I had the fortune of having Ms. Soluski as a instructor or a teacher at Gilroy High School, and also, um, she was a very involved parent and volunteer at Rucker School when I was there with her daughter. And she, um, she was inspirational with her curiosity and her creativity and just her, she just had a very sweet and encouraging nature, and I just, I'm, I'm really happy that this is being brought to us and that the community is, is supporting her and recognizing her in this way.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Tovar?
No, uh, Councilmember.
You've had her too at Rucker School?
Yeah. No, 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 no. No, 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 but she, she said, I mean, she said it so eloquently, so.
Okay, I just would like to clarify.
Not from Gilroy.
Is it, is it the, is it the Claudia Soluski Research Room or the Claudia Kendall Soluski Research Room? What are you naming it?
So, uh, the Historical Society has recommended the Claudia Kendall, which is her maiden name.
Okay, so Kendall is in there. I just want to make sure, I'm not saying that's a problem, I just want to make sure, because it's inconsistent to me. Okay. All right. Thank you. Then, um, public comment.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one speaker card and it's Connie Rogers.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I think you know that the Historical Society, uh, you have put us in charge of staffing the museum, which we love to do, and, um, in, in my mind, this honor is, is overdue. Uh, we, um, also did have help from Articulate Solutions in designing the plaque and, uh, the brass part has already been ordered and Lido Gallery is going to help us frame it. One other thing that hasn't been mentioned yet is, uh, her main book that was shown on the screen, her husband has donated the royalties from that book to the museum. So, um, it's win-win-win all the way around, and I think some of her friends and are here tonight with one over there, anyway. I, I did have, have any trouble getting recommendations. People fell all over themselves trying to give recommendations, and I especially appreciate yours, Rebecca. That was very nice. So it's on order and come by and take a look. It should be here soon. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, no other public comments? Well, I, I went to Rucker School too, but I, she wasn't there when I was there, but that's because I'm a lot older. I, I don't even remember separate English teachers at Rucker School, to be honest. We just had like homeroom.
No, she volunteered there because Cassie was in our class, yeah.
Okay. Well, so I closed public comment, so now it's, uh, possible action from the council. Need a motion to approve the.
Also, also move.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Marks and seconded by Councilmember Armendaris to approve the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation with the word Kendall in there. What is wrong with my?
Is yours not working, Madam?
It's apparently not working because I'm hitting it and nothing is showing up.
Uh, I'm, may I ask, your vote is yes?
My vote is yes. Okay, so that was unanimous. All right, thank you. Moving on to 11.3. Gilroy Zoning Ordinance Update Progress Report. I want to, um, specify for everyone that this is not a, a matter for council deliberation. Uh, this is a progress report of where staff is in making sure Gilroy's ordinances are reflective of the latest 2040 general plan. Okay, Craig?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, just as you stated, this is a, an update on the progress of our Gilroy 2040 zoning code comprehensive update, which was initiated after adoption of the 2040 general plan. This is something we need to do in order to assure that the new zoning ordinance will match the new general plan. So there's quite a bit of review that we need to do and quite a bit of updating that we want to do in that, uh, document. Of course, we want to make sure in addition to complying with the new general plan that we comply with, uh, any new state laws, and we also want to take the opportunity to update the format of the code to make it a bit more user-friendly. We currently have 34 different articles or sections of the code, and we're trying to condense that down to eight very specific and subject matter-specific, uh, targeted articles. This has been a pretty complen- comprehensive and extensive review. We've involved a number of different departments and outside agencies in this review, and we've gotten quite a bit of comment. Um, there's been quite a bit of internal and external comment on the document, and, uh, so we want to make sure we move forward methodically and carefully and come up back to you and to the community with a document that's new, refreshed, better, improved and, and understandable. This is, slide just briefly gives you a sense of, of the new articles that would be in the ordinance, replacing and incorporating the 34 different articles. There's really, the intention is not to create brand-new legislation for the city, but to take what we have and make it a bit better and a bit more clear and a bit more concise. So we're hoping that we're doing a good job doing that. We think we are, but, uh, we really are to get, get it before the community and have them take a look at it, provide us additional ideas, comments and thoughts. With respect to the different articles, we are looking at some, some issues that have come up during the drafting of this article, including some, uh, concerns that have come up, uh, brought forward to council about drive-throughs and about noise, and we're trying to improve that legislation as well so that we have a better set of rules for the community and for the council and better expectations, uh, across the board on how we, how we deal with those, those items. So our new timeframe, um, I know we had promised you last year that we thought we'd get this to you this year. Um, we will need, we do need a bit more time to get this document completed. Uh, we're, we're anticipating that by the, uh, spring, uh, season, we'll have a completed, fully completed draft, and that we can get that moving forward to adoption by summer of 2023. The, the time taken that will be required is taken to get out, this out to the community, get, get comments and then, and then bring it back for further review and discussion and, and then, and then adoption. So the recommendation is that you accept the, uh, progress report, and, um, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Okay, council, uh, anyone with questions of Craig? Okay, seeing none, then public comment. Do we have any?
Yes, one speaker card and it's from Joe Gojiano.
Okay.
Council, I'll keep it short. I just want to thank Craig and staff. Um, this is, uh, there's a ton of information in the zoning ordinance update and, and something that is, uh, laborious, but ultimately really important for the city. I'm with McCarthy Ranch. We've been, uh, landowners and property owners in the city for over 20 years, um, and, and hope to continue, um, that work in the city. Um, and, and ultimately, we, and, and the family and the company is successful when the city, uh, Gilroy residents are successful, um, and, and ultimately, you know, council. So I think, uh, you know, knowing that there's nothing to vote on here is just making sure that, you know, when the updates come out, that it, you know, everyone has eyes on it because there are a lot of important decisions in the, in the 2040 general plan, and, and we've just enjoyed the opportunity to work with Craig and are, and are thankful to continue to have, um, open dialogue with you all.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Um, Craig, I would like to ask just one other question then before we, uh, move on, and that is, um, because we did get, uh, written public comments too, is there a confusion or is, are we unclear or is this part of what this process needs to be on what the zoning is, what our city zoning is for certain parcels that are out near the McCarthy Ranch site?
Um, I apologize, I'm not quite clear what the.
What the question is?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm wondering if we, are we able to tell an applicant what the current, what the zoning rules are for the lands that are out at the, I don't even mean just McCarthy, I just mean the whole area of 150, 10th Street and Arroyo.
Well, yes, just, uh, in general, so what we do currently is that we, we have to be consistent with the general plan.
Right.
So if there's a, a current, so our current zoning map is still in effect, so the current zoning regulations are in effect. So Ms., uh, McCarthy Ranch in particular, and Joe, and, and Joey, uh, we've had conversations because they were looking at property that, uh, has a different new general plan designation. And so we have to figure out, well, does the current zoning implement that? So we, we work with applicants to make sure that what is being proposed is in line with the general plan, and, and it's a bit confusing right now.
Right, and so that is part of what will be clarified in this process? That's what I mean. So this process is addressing that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions of council, then somebody is welcome to make, oh no, we don't need a motion.
We don't, we don't need a vote to accept the report.
Just accept the report, right? No actions needed.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I would like to ask for just like a three-minute break before we get to the next item, just so, okay? Real quick, and then we can go on to 11.4. Okay, we're all here? All right? Okay, I'm trying to reconvene the meeting, everybody, so can, can everyone please take their seats or take their conversations outside? Okay? All right, thank you. We are back in session. We are on item 11.4. Consideration of Formal Council Position on the Proposed Sergeant Ranch Query Project in South Santa Clara County. I'd like to, uh, state for the record, uh, for everybody, this is not within the jurisdiction of the Gilroy City Council. We're being asked to add ourselves to what is now three cities in Santa Clara County of the 15, three in Santa Clara County who have taken a position. So that's what we're, uh, looking to do here. Please note that if you feel strongly on this one way or the other, it's the County Board of Supervisors that you need to make sure you contact and, and be present at, okay? We are not the deciding body. We would just be the fourth city to take a position in Santa Clara County. Okay? So with that, Sharon Groey, who's our new, um, Goey, sorry, I said Groey. Goey is our, uh, new Director of Community Development, and she's going to give us this report. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor, um, Councilmembers and members of the community. So the item before you tonight is the Proposed Sergeant Ranch Query Project in South Santa Clara County, and for, uh, council's consideration of adopting a formal position. Uh, so for background, at the council meeting on April 4th, the council requested the Sergeant Ranch Query Project Draft Environmental Impact Report be agendized so that council could, um, comment on the project and potentially take a formal position on the project. So here's some information about the Sergeant Ranch Query Project. It is a proposed sand and gravel mining operation. It's located on Sergeant Ranch property, which is about four miles south of the city of Gilroy and one mile south of the US 101 and 25 interchange. It's located in the unincorporated area of the county, so it does not lie within the city limits of the city of Gilroy. Mining operations would take place on about 403 acres of the Sergeant Ranch property, which is about over 5,100 acres. Mining operations will be conducted in four phases over 30 years. Each phase will be reclaimed upon completion of the mining activities within that phase. At the end of the project's life, upon completion of all reclamation activities, the project site will be returned to cattle grazing or open space. The project will require the adoption of a reclaimation, reclamation plan and issuance of a conditional use permit that's required from Santa Clara County. The Draft Environmental Impact Report is a highly technical, complex and detailed analysis of the proposed project's potentially significant effect on the environment. The draft EIR contains the environmental impacts and also the proposed mitigation measures. In accordance with sequel requirements, the county prepared the draft EIR and published the document on July 22nd. The public, public comment period runs from July 25th through September 26th. A digital online version is available on the county project website. There's also a hard copy available at the Gilroy Public Library. Comments received by the county by September 26th will be included and responded to in the final EIR. As we mentioned, the draft EIR, um, is a complex analysis that contains the environmental impacts and also describes the mitigation measures to eliminate or reduce some of those impacts. However, even with the implementation of the mitigation measures, some of those impacts will remain significant and are considered unavoidable adverse impacts of the project. And these include aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal cultural resources, geology, soils, paleontology and transportation. The draft EIR also identified irreversible impacts. Built-out of the project would commit non-renewable resources during project construction. Non-renewable resources would be consumed during project operations. Irreversible extraction and consumption of aggregate materials mined from the project site would occur as a result of project operations. The draft EIR also indicated some areas of concern, including the loss of biological habitat and the loss of cultural and tribal cultural resources, especially those of importance to the Amamutson tribe. Sergeant Ranch is known as an, uh, is an area known as Huristak to the tribe. Huristak is the, uh, like I said, the heart of the central, uh, part of the ancestral land of the tribe and is the location of ceremonial and sacred sites. So there are several options for council to consider. Council may comment or decline to comment on the draft EIR. Council may indicate support or opposition to the project and authorize the mayor or designate to submit a letter to Santa Clara County. Council may indicate support or opposition to the project and direct staff to prepare a resolution for council consideration and adoption in September, or council may take no action. For reference, there are four cities that each have adopted a resolution in opposition to the project. These are the cities Morgan Hill, Santa Cruz, Santa Clara and Sunnyvale. Staff's recommendations for council to consider adopting a formal position on the Proposed Sergeant Ranch Query Project in South Santa Clara County. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, council, do you have any questions of Sharon? Okay, Councilmember Marks. Sharon, in your opinion, if the council were to oppose this project, which one has more weight, sending a letter or a resolution? Or both?
I think a resolution.
A resolution would probably, yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Armendaris?
Thank you. I think Sharon, Sharon, are there other agencies or governmental bodies that have, um, made statements? have made statements or submitted resolutions or anything that we should be aware of?
Yeah, besides those four cities, we're not aware of any so far. All right, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then, thank you. And we will go to public comment. And how many cards do we have?
We have 11 speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I hope nobody minds if we do two minutes each. I have a feeling that things are going to be very, very similar. So if that's all right, okay, two minutes each. And go ahead then, Ty, and call the first three or four, and then I'll ask you to please come up in the front so that we can move through.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The first speaker is Brian Schmidt, followed by Eric Medina, followed by Michelle Nelson, followed by, forgive me here, Lou Caramante Jr.?
Okay, that's enough for now. And then you can, you'll have to repeat those. So, okay. If you could state your name again, it's just easier.
Of course, thank you. Brian Schmidt, good evening. Brian Schmidt from Greenfield Hills. And I'm happy to represent our Gilroy residential supporters and members of Greenfield Hills here today. And we ask the council to please support adoption of a resolution opposing the quarry and supporting the protection of the land and access for the Amamutsan people. Basically, you have two options in front of you today, a non-collaborative and a collaborative approach to doing things. The non-collaborative approach is what the applicant for the sand quarry is trying to do. And what that's going to result in is this absentee landlord wants to devastate basically 400 acres of land, causing at peak production 240 truck trips daily that is going to impact Gilroy, either south or north, depending on how they come out. And it's also going to have a significant impact on the land there. By the way, I think it might be useful for Gilroy to go beyond these, these options and consider investigating the traffic impacts on Gilroy and whether you can get mitigation for those impacts, since that might be to the benefit of your community. In addition to that, there are 14 different significant and unavoidable environmental impacts, some of which, as just shown in the staff report, are irreversible from this project. That is the non-collaborative approach. An alternative and a collaborative approach would be to work on the open space protection of this land, considering it to be a gem, a regional gem, and especially a gem for Gilroy. You're the closest community to this area. It's something that could be really of benefit to the people of Gilroy and working with the native community in this area, the Amamutsan Tribal Band. It's something that could be an incredible place for all of them. So that type of collaborative approach might be a much better outcome for what you might want to seek. So for all these reasons, I encourage you to adopt a resolution. There are several that you have in your packet, and we have sent a draft resolution based on the Sunnyvale resolution. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, next speaker?
Eric Medina, followed by Michelle Nelson, followed by Lou Caramante Jr., followed by Connie Rogers.
Hi, yes, my name is Eric. I'm a math instructor at Gavlin College. I'm going to read excerpts of a letter that a few faculty at Gavlin College from various departments put together. "We, the undersigned, respectfully urge you to make clear your opposition to the Proposed Sergeant Quarry Project. The land threatened by the quarry, known as Hurastak in the Amamutsan language, is of immense cultural, historical, and spiritual importance to the Amamutsan Tribal Band. As contemporary occupants of Aloneye Territory, we at the college are committed to fostering civic engagement and equity. Thus, we support the preservation of sites such as Hurastak that are deemed indispensable by the historically marginalized members of the Greater Bay Area. The mine also poses concerns for environmental sustainability. The area is home to several special status animals whose habitats may be impacted by the construction of the mine. Furthermore, access to the proposed mine will require the regular use of old Monterey Road and Highway 101. This is likely to foment more traffic congestion for an already overencumbered stretch of highway that residents from all over South Santa Clara County and San Benito County rely on for their daily commute. Safeguarding the site from the proposed sand and gravel mine will protect local wildlife and water quality and avoid the unnecessary intensification of highway traffic, thereby supporting the region's overall environmental sustainability." Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Michelle Nelson, followed by Lou Caramante, followed by Connie Rogers, followed by Carolyn Tognetti.
Someone named Caramante is not in the front row. Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay. Good evening. I was here last, at the last meeting, decided to be back, so here I am. I encourage you to pass a resolution in opposition to the development of this quarry. And I want to go back to my history as a, as a science teacher. My entire teaching career was spent teaching science to middle and high school students. And of the six, the significant unavoidable impacts, I want to focus on the biological, biological impacts. There's something, you know, we have a certain occupancy in the room, right? You know, the fire marshal will get upset if we became too crowded. There's something in biology called carrying capacity. Who remembers that from school? No? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So anyway, so imagine you have, then it's kind of like habitat. So you have a certain amount of space that supports a population, and that space is one of the resources. So you have the shelter and you have the water and the food. So if you cut out some of the habitat, what you're doing is you're stressing that population that lives there. So you put more animals into the remaining space, and it exceeds the carrying capacity or the ability of that spot to support the animals. You say, well, they can just go to another spot. Well, we've seen what's been happening in Gilroy. I mean, where do they go? Ultimately, you know, you have to say it's stop at some point. And I know you don't have control over it, but I think your voice would be important to add to the other resolutions that have already been submitted. I also want to talk about the corridor. And if you disrupt the corridor that animals use to travel from one area to the next, you're impacting the genetic health, the biodiversity of that population. So we've seen record extinctions all across the planet, and it's due to loss of habitat. But what that means is the population comes down, and that affects the genes, the gene pool. And inbreeding is not a good thing, right? You know, you know about inbreeding in humans, it's also not good in animals. And I have, I'm dubious about their claim that they can reclaim the land. If the animals are gone, they're gone. 30 years? It's irreversible, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Right, next speaker?
Lou Caramante Jr., followed by Connie Rogers, followed by Carolyn Tognetti, followed by Valentin Lopez.
Hi, my name's Lou Caramante Jr. My family's resided in Santa Clara County for over 120 years, which seems like a long time nowadays, but only a speck in the human history of the Gilroy region here. The area now known as Sergeant Ranch traditionally was known as an area, was part of an area known as Hurastak, which is the most sacred Amamutsan ceremonial site. Although Sergeant Ranch is located outside the city of Gilroy's boundaries, Hurastak is an important part of the city of Gilroy's history. For countless generations, it was a spiritual gathering point for indigenous peoples throughout the region. And the proposed quarry would basically consist of an open pit mine that would remove about 40 million tons of sand and gravel from four hills that have been considered sacred for countless generations. The proposed open pit mine would seriously impact the fundamental human rights of the Amamutsan people. Its construction could be viewed as a form of genocide, the destruction of a distinct population's primary religious or cultural site, according to United Nations definitions of the term genocide. There are no ways to mitigate the overall cultural impact of the proposed mine. And as the last speaker just mentioned, you know, the mine is sited at the nexus of a wildlife corridor that connects genetically isolated populations within three different mountain ranges, and also contains unique populations of threatened species. The mine really wouldn't benefit the city of Gilroy directly. Only very few jobs would be created. And the city wouldn't receive any direct tax revenues from the operation. The standing aggregate traffic increase on Highway 101 would definitely be an issue. The hydrology of the area, which borders the Paro River, might also be impacted. If the mine isn't built, and Sergeant Ranch remains an open space.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Sorry.
It's okay, but thank you. Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Connie Rogers, followed by Carolyn Tognetti, followed by Valentin Lopez.
Good evening again, council members and Mayor Blankley. We ask you, on behalf of Gilroy Growing Smarter, to enact a resolution urging Santa Clara County to deny the application for a quarry on the Sergeant Ranch property. We ask you to direct staff to make official comments on the DEIR. The proposed quarry would be located four miles south of our city. It is within our sphere of influence, and our residents would bear the brunt of the impacts. Based on our review of the draft environmental impact report, the following significant and unavoidable impacts, which cannot be fully mitigated, would have permanent detrimental effect on the health, environment, and quality of life within Gilroy, in addition to conflicting with several of our own general plan policies. So these six areas that cannot be mitigated are aesthetics, air quality, transportation, biological resources, geology, soils and paleontology, and cultural and tribal resources. So I would like to add, they may, may not create many jobs, but it will affect our tourism attraction. You know, that, that, our visual attraction is part of it. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker?
Carolyn Tognetti, followed by Valentin Lopez, followed by Catherine Luna.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm speaking also on behalf of Gilroy Growing Smarter and just kind of following up with Connie on the letter that was sent to you already. But I thought this was important, having served on the general plan 2040 as well as the 2020 general plans. I thought that this was interesting when we found this in the Natural and Cultural Resources chapter. It could have been written for this project or against this project, if you will. So it begins with the following. "Gilroy's location in the southern Santa Clara Valley, surrounded by hills, streams, and agriculture, is one of the many reasons that residents love living here. Gilroy has a proud multicultural heritage that spans centuries. These sensitive natural and cultural resources are critical to Gilroy's vibrancy and prosperity, and therefore deserve protection." That's a perfect quote. So members of Gilroy Growing Smarter have met to discuss this issue in depth. And in light of the above, we're asking you, our city council members, to spare our residents the serious health and environmental impacts this project would bring. Honor our general plan 2040. Direct staff to officially comment on the DEIR on some of the parts that are going to affect Gilroy. And ultimately enact a resolution opposing the quarry application. I'd also like to mention, separate from that letter, is that I looked, I Googled how many quarries are around us, and we have nine in generally, well, you have two in Aromas and others that are within 50-mile radius. So we don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Valentin Lopez, followed by Catherine Luna, followed by Teddy Simon.
Good evening. My name's Valentin Lopez, and I'm the chairman of the Amamutsan Tribal Band. Hurastak is our most sacred site. It is the place where we had four tribal villages there, and their job and their responsibility was to ensure that those grounds stayed sacred and ready for ceremony. It was a home of our spiritual leader, Kuk Sui. This history's never told. The history of the Amamutsan have been ignored, forgotten, and erased from history. The Greater Bay Area, no, excuse me, the Greater Monterey Bay and Intu, the Salinas and Santa Clara Valleys, was the most populated area of indigenous people north of Mexico City. How many knew that? The greatest population north of Mexico City. This was a tremendously important environment, a, a, a location for indigenous people. And again, they've been ignored, forgotten, and erased. We have three brutal periods of colonization. Our, and our population was reduced by 97, 98 percent. And our histories are ignored. You know, we have Santa Cruz, the Holy Cross. I mean, there's not, there's no, there's no record of Native Americans on these lands at all. Gilroy was Kula Liestak. What does that mean? Why is that important to our people? How many people in Gilroy know that Kula Liestak was the name of Gilroy beforehand? Those are just the important history lessons. What we want to do is turn Hurastak into a tribal village. And then we would like to find a location for a cultural center and a museum for the Amamutsan people. We would love that for, to be in Gilroy. We would love that to be in Gilroy. We ask Gilroy to recognize the close, important relationship that we have with the city, to respect that and to work with us, to allow us to, you know, to begin to recover our culture, our traditions, and our, and our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker?
Catherine Luna, followed by Teddy Simon, followed by Joseph Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm thankful to be here. Mishmin Truhiish, Amamutsan Catherine Luna. I am the daughter of Amamutsan Nation, along with my brother here, Val Lopez, and our other relatives sitting back there. We come here in a great, in a very great and pleading time to ask for your guys' support to sign a resolution to save Hurastak. We need to remember everything that was said before in regards to the impact with animal life, plant life, water life. It'll also impact the Amamutsan Nation. It'll also impact all of you here sitting in this room today. It will also impact all of your seven generation, generations in the future. Because your children will be sitting there and breathing in air of 30 years of traffic, of smog. So this is not a one-month or two-month day or work. This is going to be for 30 years. And not only to recognize the idea that Hurastak is connected to the San Andreas Fault. So we're discussing, discussing 30 years of impact. So what is that impact also going to be on San Andreas Fault? So we need to understand the atrocities that have happened to Amamutsan Nation. But if this is, goes and moves forward, this atrocity is going to affect all of us sitting here today, whether or not we want it or not, but it will impact us. So I ask you in a good way to support Amamutsan Nation, to allow us to protect and take our obligation to take care of this land in a good way. Thank you. Doosanakunis.
Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Teddy Simon, followed by Joseph Robinson, followed by Sally Armandares.
Jate, shikado shidanei. Good evening, all my relatives, Mayor Blankley, and members of the Gilroy City Council. My name is Teddy Simon, citizen of the Navajo Nation and indigenous justice advocate at the ACLU of Northern California. It's my pleasure to stand with community members of the city of Gilroy and the Amamutsan Tribal Band in representation of the thousands of members of the ACLU of Northern California, including here in Gilroy, in asking you all to pass or to adopt a resolution this evening. We all know and we learn more and more about the unending and brutal attempts to erase indigenous people all throughout our country. Those continue today. And this sounds, this sounds like hyperbole, but it's really not. A mine at Hurastak would just be a contemporary manifestation of that cultural erasure. The existence of native nations, the existence of tribal people today depends on the right to self-governance, the right to self-determination, the ability to teach our languages, our lifeways, the freedom to celebrate culture and tradition. And that all is deeply and intimately connected to land. The destruction of Hurastak would be another irreparable act of cultural genocide against the first peoples of our state. So again, it's our pleasure and honor to join with the Amamutsan Tribal Band and their many allies this evening in urging you all to adopt a resolution.
Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Sally Armandares, I'm sorry, Joseph Robinson, followed by Sally Armandares, followed by Ron Kirkish.
So I was volunteering at the Gilroy Museum. It started innocently enough. I had read Claudia Soluski's book, but I didn't know much beyond that. And, but I was given the opportunity to help people present to schools about the Amamutsan, about whom I knew nothing. And so I wanted to read a little bit more about the Amamutsan. I read Margolin's book, but I understood that to be needing updating and so on and so forth. So I read more and more. And, you know, then the question instantly becomes, well, what happened to them? And, you know, I was reading Sherwin Cook and Robert Heiser and... And, you know, I was reading Sherwin Cook and Robert Heiser and reading, you know, Peter Barnett's State of the State speech, and you get into, you know, state-sanctioned genocide. And it's not, it's not, it's not pretty, but that's the reality. And so it seems to me that this is an easy layup in terms of reconciling, moving towards reconciling. And, you know, I, you know, I was working on a history of Gilroy to, you know, to, as a combination with Trudeau, Cooling, Nelson's thing, and I had 100 years of timeline up there, because I had 100 inches of wall, so it was an inch a year, it worked out really nicely. And then it turned the corner, and then I thought, just as a thought experiment, how far would it go if I included Amamutson's history? And it would go four blocks down to the park, down the street. So I think Val Lopez makes the point that, you know, when we're looking at these, you know, these documents, the EIR, they talk about, you know, the environmental impacts and so on and so forth, but they don't talk about the history which is towering and should be towering over these proceedings.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sally Armandares, followed by Ron Kirkish.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. My name is Sally Armandares, and I just want to talk a little bit about what the brother Lopez said, and that is, I want, some of you may know, some of you may not know, depending where you went to school and what they taught you as far as history is concerned, but for the last 500 years, my people, the indigenous people of the Americas, have suffered genocide on a large scale and on the local level, that we can see by our local brothers that are here today. Now that these, that there is very little land left and are very little of our culture, language, and tradition, we, Gilroy Strong, have the opportunity to preserve a little piece of what was once a thriving civilization. We, Gilroy Strong, you, each one of you that sits in the city council, should do all you can to protect it and restore it to its righteous owners. You claim Gilroy Strong, Eurastoc is the original Gilroy Strong, because they were here before Gilroy, the city of Gilroy became Gilroy. So let's keep it that way. Don't forget that this is the original land. There's three of you that sit up here that have indigenous blood, that you carry that indigenous roots, and that's Muñoz, Tobar, and Armandares, and you owe it to your ancestors to protect the sacred land, whether it's in California, or in Mexico City, or in Guatemala, because America is a continent, not a nation. And we did not cross the borders, they crossed us, and that's why we had different countries. But do protect this land. This is your last opportunity to learn your history and do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ron Kirkish.
My reservations are more personal, maybe selfish. The gentleman said that we're going to have about 240 trucks, but I imagine that's a day, okay, of gravel and rock. I've had a lot of rocks from passing cars as I'm commuting, back and forth to Santa Cruz when I was working for Texas Instruments, or from when I was working at other semiconductors' places. I've had a lot of, my front window has been chipped, my paint has been chipped, and 240 trucks, I don't think they're going to be adequately prepared to not allow that to keep happening. So I have sympathy for most of the comments that you all said, but I'm more being practical to myself that I think it would just cause a lot of problems. And, you know, when those trucks toss a rock, they just keep going, and they aren't responsible, and they won't even claim responsibility for the damage they caused. So I'm more inclined to say that it's probably not a good thing, and plus, we already have several places around here already that do the same thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments?
No speaker, cars, and mayor.
Okay. Thank you all for coming. Thank you to everybody who wrote comments in, and I will close the public comment period now and come back to council. I don't know if there's any, oh, there is discussion, okay, otherwise I was just going to suggest a motion. Okay, council member La Romiños.
Yeah, Ron took the thought right out of my mind, as someone who's all too familiar with safe light repair. Believe me, I know. But seriously, you know, thank you to all of the speakers for coming in, for sharing your perspectives. This is an important issue, again, being very clear with everybody, transparency, right? We're not the ones who ultimately make this call, but we can weigh in on the discussion with a thoughtful perspective. I think that's what we're going to try to do in just a minute. My perspective, in addition to the concerns raised about traffic, which are very real, and especially as the mayor and I know, as we're thinking about what the 10125 interchange is going to look like in a couple of years, that's a big concern for us as well. But we talked a lot about preservation and whether it's preserving our natural resources, but the cultural resources as well, and that preservation is so essential for ensuring that we have a sense of identity in place, and that sense of identity in place really comes from our history. So based on that and the other very real challenges too that I spoke about, you know, my perspective would be to support a resolution that expresses our council's opposition to the ranch, to the gravel, excuse me, to the gravel operation.
Thank you. Council member Bracco.
Yeah, when I was in high school, I was in the FFA program, we used to go up there and buy cattle. And I've been hunting and fishing up on that property, and it's like a lot of other places in this valley, it's some of the most beautiful, pristine places you can see, and I'm against harming that. So I'll be voting with Peter.
Okay, council member Armandares.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as a fourth-generation Gilroyan, a descendant of indigenous people, I, you know, I value our green spaces, I value our wildlife, their habitat, the corridors that are provided, you know, all around us, of course, the beauty of our surrounding foothills and mountain ranges. And I want to recognize too that we all want to make amends, right, for the attempts at physical and cultural genocide that have been happening for hundreds of years, right? We don't want to continue that against indigenous people. The Amamutson as original stewards of this land, like somebody mentioned, they are our treasure, like this mountainside Eurastoc, its historic cultural value as a ceremonial sacred place, that's our treasure, you know, that's what we leave to our children, you know, so they can enjoy the beauty, the hunting, the richness of it, right? Something that we can't recapture, you know, no matter how hard we try in 30 years, we would not be able to recapture it. And so I'm in full support of this resolution to protect Eurastoc, to deny the permit for mining or the quarry project, and also to direct staff to make comments on behalf of the city. Thank you.
All right. Council member Marks.
I am 100% in support of a resolution to oppose this project. I agree with all of you that have spoken here tonight. Many months ago, I brought this to the council as an agenda item, because I was very concerned about what was going to happen out there, and right now, I would like you to raise your hands very high to show all of us how many of you are in support of opposing this project. Thank you. That is very impressive. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, council member Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for coming out tonight and pouring your heart out, reminding us of who protected this land for generations before us. I really appreciate that, I respect it, and, you know, at the same time, we might not have a direct say on what happens on here, but we have a really good impact being neighbors. And so I do support a resolution, you know, to go against it, but I also do want to see staff comment on the EIR. I think that is just as impactful to hear it from city officials as it is to hear it from a legislative body. And, you know, in 2022, to read a lot of these EIRs and to hear people come up with ways that they're going to mitigate impacts that we know are going to be significant and unavoidable, I think is horrible. Like, there's no way, especially on a 30-year job, there's no way that you could consciously just say, you know, hey, don't worry about it, we're going to have a very negative impact. We know what the future's going to look like, but at the same time, we'll just sweep it under the carpet and hope to make some mitigation start. So I'm in full support with hopefully what's going on here. Thank you.
Council member Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify things, was there a motion already made?
No.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'm going to say the same thing that many of us have said up here. Thank you all for being here. Specifically to Mr. Lopez, thank you for taking my call today. I appreciate the history he gave me, the history lesson. I think I learned more in that conversation that we had than probably in all my years in school, so I appreciate that. And again, I'm going to follow most of, if not all, my colleagues up here in opposing this, and hopefully make a motion for a resolution to oppose this project.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah.
I'm seconding it. Okay, I still have a comment, but that's okay. No, it's okay. So we have a motion by council member Tovar and a second by council member Marks to draft for a resolution to oppose.
Correct.
Well, if that's the end of your motion, then we can just vote on that.
Do we need a second one to direct staff?
Well, we do, if that's what you want. That was going to be my comment. So if you're done, if that's your motion, I'm good with that.
Well, no.
Then I'm going to comment. I'm just going to comment.
Please.
No, because I certainly intended to support a resolution that opposes this, but I don't support, and Jimmy can comment, because I've had this discussion already, with the city making official comments on something that's not in our jurisdiction. And I want to remind the council that we're hopefully going to be having something of our own coming up that's going to completely change the habitat and animals and animal habitats and plants and all kinds of other things that could be happening. So we don't, I don't think we should go there. I think we should do a resolution that opposes this for the county and leave it at that.
Mayor, could we, if we want to separate those, the different motions?
There's only one motion on the floor.
No, I know, but if there's a second.
Do you want to accept a friendly amendment? Because I would propose a friendly amendment.
Let's do separate, that way, and then we can do another.
Well, there's no separate. Either, if the motion passes, it'll, we're done with the item.
Right, but then that lets us know if there's a majority right there.
Yeah, so it either accepts a friendly amendment, or someone can make a substitute motion on that if they're not happy with it.
Okay.
Do you want them?
Yeah, I'd like to propose a friendly amendment that we include language directing city staff to speak at the hearing of the Santa Clara County Planning Commission in accordance with our resolution, right, as to our city not supporting the project, the quarry project.
I'm okay with that.
Are you, Carol?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Well, then Jimmy, do you want to say something, or?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Of course, city staff takes direction from council. In this situation, I do recommend that staff not be directed to do those things for a few particular reasons. One, the EIR has been conducted by county staff, and in order for city staff to evaluate the EIR, we most likely need to conduct our own EIR. So we would be essentially doing a peer review of an EIR that's already identified the negative consequences of a project like this. So it puts staff in an unusual position to then be criticizing our own peers in a project that's not in our jurisdiction. I could imagine how we would feel if another jurisdiction evaluated our staff work on a project that wasn't under their purview. The second part is that you are being asked to make a formal position politically, and having staff go and speak out against a project, again, not in our jurisdiction, in my opinion, would not be the best position to put staff in. So again, of course, we take direction from council, but I do recommend that staff be left out of this as it is a political position taken on a project not in the jurisdiction of the city of Gilroy.
Can I amplify on that for a moment? The EIR identifies significant impacts, as members of the public have stated, and we've seen here, it's in the staff report, and it says that there are mitigations, but the mitigations are not adequate. In other words, mitigations, there are significant unmitigated impacts. So the EIR has actually established the bad aspects of the project. What the county will have to do when it comes to them for decision is decide whether or not they want to approve it anyway. And, you know, we have the same issue when we approve a project. If there is an unmitigated impact, the city of Gilroy can approve a project in our jurisdiction by making a statement of overriding considerations, and that's allowed under SEQA. It's a statement that says that although there are significant unmitigated impacts, the various benefits of the project outweigh them. And we've done that, the city of Gilroy has done that. So that's a decision the county would have to make. That's why the resolutions, I think, are the really important thing, because the resolutions are telling the county, we don't agree you should make that decision. The environmental impacts have been analyzed, probably they've been well analyzed, though I haven't read the EIR, but my guess is that it's quite thorough and analyzes it in great detail, and it clearly says they're unavoidable. In other words, the mitigations that they propose are not adequate. So the decision, the decision that the county makes is the weighing, and that's our political point of view, saying, we don't think the benefits of the project outweigh these impacts.
Exactly.
And that's the rationale of essentially adopting a resolution and then saying to county, look, it's all been analyzed, you probably spent a million dollars on the EIR, and it shows a lot of negative environmental effects. We think they're really important, and you shouldn't override them. So I'm agreeing with Jimmy that the essence of what we ought to do is, given the feeling of the council, is adopt a strong resolution which staff should draft for the council's consideration.
Right. Council member Tovar, did you want to change your motion then to remove that part?
No, I'm going to stick with my original motion, so.
And council member Marks, are you sticking with yours?
No, wait a minute. Your original one, that says what?
Well, no, no, with the amendment.
Oh, with the amendment? To direct staff to go up there? No, I can't, I can't accept that.
So we don't have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, so now we have a second to that, so.
And I want to add something, I want to add something to you to the second, is that we have drafts of resolutions up here, if that helps staff, you know, use those rather than come up with your own, just pointing out out there.
Okay. So councilor Tovar, are you done, are you still needing to speak?
No, no.
No, are you needing to speak, council member Armandares? Because there is a motion and a second, it's been seconded by council member Hilton.
No.
Okay. So we have a motion by council member Tovar and seconded by council member Hilton that includes putting staff in the position that we've just been counseled against. So let's vote on that motion and then see if we go to, oh.
I don't think I completely understand what staff is being asked to do. Initially, we were asked to comment on the EIR, and then staff was requested to take this to the county, so I would like very, very clear direction from the council as a whole of what you're asking us to do.
If it even passes. We haven't voted on it yet, but yes.
All right, I'm going to speak to it, because I just, no, definitely not. I don't want staff in the position where they're testifying in front of them. That is not, not the intention, I don't think that's the intention of any of us.
Then that's a changed motion.
No, it's not.
It's not, because, no, because the unmitigated impacts are lined up here, that's plenty for staff to talk about.
That's all you should be talking about.
And the fact that we're the most impacted geographical close city that will bear the brunt of the most detriment, right? Like, they can just say that, they don't have to study the EIR, they can just speak to these things and say, hey, we're staff, we were directed by our council to highlight these unmitigated impacts, right? And. To reemphasize why they're bad.
Exactly.
Why, to reemphasize, but not give them any separate direction.
But isn't that something that could be articulated in the resolution itself without staff?
Yes, exactly.
So then, I don't know why we're.
It just seems so much, so passive, right, a resolution versus actually us having staff there saying, hey, this is our community, look at how heavily it's going to impact us in terms of traffic, environment, and culture, right?
But we speak for the city. We are, we are the voice of the city, and I think that my concern is that there is a strategic reason in not opening the door, that when we make future decisions, that other cities, that other agencies, groups within the region now are, you know, asking us to redo, or they're doing their own studies, something that's outside of our, outside of their, you know, regular purview. We can very much oppose, as a city, this project, I think that's. I think that's been very clear. I think that's reflective of the will of everyone in here. And as the voice for the city, the final word really comes from us. And so we can articulate exactly those points. Here are the points that we don't like in the EIR. Here are the issues that have been raised by members of our community, and this is why we're in opposition.
Agreed.
I think we can do all of that without involving.
And it would be stronger to be a unanimous resolution.
I agree.
And I think we can do that if we just do the resolution. But if the.
I think a resolution would be included in the correspondence to the planning commission with emails and comments, whereas a staff person, they're speaking against, it's more direct and it's more impactful.
Okay, so we have, yeah, we're going to have to take a vote. And I just want everyone to know, I'm going to be voting no, and I hope everybody understands that it's not because I wouldn't be voting yes.
Well, if this fails, then we could just introduce a new motion.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay.
That's what I'm hoping.
Right. No, I understand.
Can we have the motion restated?
I don't understand the fear that we have with that.
Given the state, I will go ahead and do a roll call vote on this, Madam Mayor.
Yes, this is the motion that Councilmember Tovar amended.
Correct.
And seconded by Councilmember Hilton.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
No.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember LeRomenos?
No.
Councilmember Marks?
No.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
No.
Okay.
So that failed four to three.
With that being said, then I'll make a motion to, for a resolution to oppose this project.
Okay. And Councilmember Marks, did you want to second that?
And then I will second that, that's the original one.
Okay, and a roll call vote on that. And then staff will bring back that resolution to us.
Correct.
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember LeRomenos?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay, that was unanimous, right? Everybody? Okay, good. Okay, on to, okay, city, thank you. City Administrator Reports, item 12.1. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My report tonight is short, but very full of good information. Recently, in the, I'd say the last year or two, the city staff at the council's direction has really concentrated on grant funding opportunities, and we've seen some great successes in that. We've learned a lot, but we've also been much more involved in seeking opportunities. To date, the city's applied for 21 different grants valuing almost $48 million. And to give you the breakdown of how that $48 million has gone, we have been awarded $4.5 million. We did not receive $20.1 million, and that was because of the 10th Street Bridge Grant that we did not receive, and we are pending for $23 million right now. So we've had successes, but we also want to point out that I don't think there's really a failure in any of this. The 10th Street Bridge, as disappointing as it was not to receive that grant, laid the foundation for us to reapply. There will be several infrastructure grants coming down the road, we expect, and so that package is already bundled up and ready to go again. But some of the things that we have in the queue right now is, you know, reconstruction of segments of Monterey and LaChesa, that's a $16 million grant we applied for, an active transportation program grant for Monterey Road sidewalks and pedestrian crossings and bike lane improvements, $4 million, assistance for firefighters, we applied for a grant for a new fire engine, California Office of Emergency Services Prepare Jump Start Grant to hire a full-time community resilience coordinator for two years paid for by the state, and then opioid-affected youth initiatives, which is $600,000 for youth and family opioid and other drug treatment and prevention programs in the city of Gilroy.
Wonderful.
The good news is, is on some of these grants where we're losing, we're losing to our friends at the county. And we're glad to see that the money is in the region. We would love to have it within ourselves, but in some of these grants, the county is much more well-equipped to maybe do more for the bang for the dollar. So we lose, but we win too, so that's okay with us. But I do want to point out, our staff, on a weekly basis, we talk about grant funding. Our consultant that we hired on Retainer, California consultant, has been really good at getting us the information and helping us with the applications. And so I'm expecting that we'll have many more successes to share with you, but this program has worked really well, and it's paid for itself many times over, as you've seen in some of the successes we have had. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about grants, but right now, I do believe we still have about 13 out there we're waiting on, and we'll keep you posted as to any good news that comes in. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Jimmy. Excellent. Questions, anyone? Yeah, Peter?
Before we break, I just need to say one thing.